You go ahead and start this meeting. The City Council for the City of Brookshire, Texas will hold a regular City Council meeting on November the twenty first of two thousand and twenty four at seven o'clock P. M. in council chambers for the purpose of the following. Let's do the prayer and the pledge, please.
Our Father which art in heaven, we come before thee with much gratitude for the blessings we've received. We're grateful for all that we have been able to do here in the great city of Brookshire this year. We're thankful for this season, which we have to reflect on the blessings that we have. We're grateful for the guidance and protection which we receive, especially for the cooler weather we've been enjoying. Father, tonight we ask for thy Spirit to attend with us. We ask you to guide and direct our efforts and our work. We ask you to be with those that are dear to us but not near with us. We ask you to watch over, protect them, and keep them. In this we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Our prayers allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Melina, will you do the throw call, please?
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman McAnally.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Richards.
Present.
Mayor Branch.
Present.
Alderman McDade.
Present.
You have a corner mayor.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay. Next agenda item is number five, public comments. And by the sheet, no one has signed up. So we'll just move on to number six. Number six is consider and take action on consent agenda items listed under the consent agenda or considered routine and are generally enacted in one motion. The exception to this rule occurs when a council member requests one or more items removed from the consent agenda from for separate discussion and action. We have letter A, Brookshire Police Department monthly report. Letter B, municipal court monthly report. And C, L. J. A., Brookshire Engineering Report. D, Bills Paid Report for October twenty fourth, I mean, October twenty twenty four. And E, Revenue and Expense Report, October twenty twenty four. And F, Minutes of Regular City Council Meeting, November the seventh, twenty twenty four.
Mayor Branch, is, do we have anyone from L. J. A. here?
Shannon's here.
Could we, could we pull that off for some discussion? The L. J. A. report?
And the revenue expense report, which was number E.
So C and E.
C and E.
I move that we would approve items A, B, D, and F.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A, B, D, and F.
A, B, D, and F. Okay, moving on to number seven, new business.
We're gonna discuss item C and item E before we move on?
Do what?
Yeah.
We didn't approve them all. We want to discuss item C with L. J.
So the reason I asked for that being pulled is I just had a couple of questions. Number one, I'm not sure that I understand the shorthand notes, and I just wanted to be sure that I was clear on what this is saying. So when you, when it says L. J. A. reviewing resubmital, does that mean that you have requested something new from the customer and now you are reviewing it because the customer has submitted whatever it was you requested?
Yeah, that's the reason.
Okay, so the customer has re, they have completed the resubmission and you're just in the process of reviewing that, okay? I thought that's what it was, I just wanted to be sure. And then when it says, the, down here under the City of Brookshire Pavement Improvement Program, item B, we talked about revisiting a few streets from the approval list, and I just was wondering what the status was of that, if that's been finished or still in process?
I think it's still in the process. I know Craig has gone to a few of them.
Do we have a?
So let me, let me interrupt. The mayor and LaKeisha and I went and drove last Friday, and we made some notes on the plan, and it was sent to Craig, but it was after he had done the report, so, and he's, he's not in the office this week, so he's gonna come out and look at those streets. He's gonna drive them with us, so now that he can see what, what are, we went and drove all the streets that are on there.
I understand, yeah. So do we have a new estimated time of?
It's still, it's still the same. I mean, it's still the same, they're still in, you know.
Okay. Okay, that was all of my questions.
I have questions for you. Concerning the outfalls for Crystal Lakes, I think I pray here that you are working with the attorneys to try to get the resolve. Do you have any additional details on that?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Now we'll move to number seven, new business.
Now we need to discuss some.
The expense report. So.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, you're right, I'm sorry.
So I have questions on the expense report. One thing is, we need to keep an eye on legal fees, because right now we're about twenty thousand dollars for, for the month of October, and you only have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted. So you may have to move some money in that account if need be. Also, if you go to the engineering fees.
Which fees?
Engineering fees, homepage, that's account number five, four, one, twenty. We spent seventeen thousand, there's no budget for twenty, for FY twenty five. So that's something we need to look at. The same thing with waste hauling. We spent seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, and there's no budget. I know it's a small amount, but.
Waste hauling is, falls under, all our budget for that's under Public Works. It should be, so I don't know if that's just misallocated, but I'll, I'll look into it, make sure that it's coming out of the right place.
Also, let's see. Did Public Works, there's no fuel usage for October. It's zero.
I, I would have to, I'll have to look into that, I don't.
Can you make note to check it, please?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Also, for code enforcement, account number five, four, eight, sixty. We spent twenty-seven hundred dollars and there's no budget for twenty-five.
Code enforcing?
Mm-hmm. It's gonna be account number five, four, eight, sixty.
Okay.
And then for capital outlay, account number fifty-four, oh, three, oh. We had a skid steer that we purchased. Was that budgeted in for twenty-five?
It was, it was, we were gonna, there was a discrepancy in that, I saw that we're over in that capital outlay, so we're gonna, we're gonna look at that, but yeah, it was budgeted for.
Okay. All right, seventy-seven thousand. And this may be a true number, but I have a question for the chief. So there's no overtime in October? Zero?
If we spend?
Yes.
That's, that's probability.
Okay. And let's see, oh, I noticed there's not any budget line items for October populated for E. D. C. No salaries, no, no payroll tax. Legal fees did, no professional services. B. C. D. Coordinator, is that being paid out of the city side, or it should be out of the E. D. C. side?
It should be out of the E. D. C. side.
Okay, because that was the expense for eleven thousand.
Okay.
But it did not come out of E. D. C.
I'll see, it might be tweaking that report.
Okay. That's all I have. Oh, yeah, thank you.
I move we approve items C and E with the notations and, and requests as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item number seven, new business. Letter A is discussion and possible action to improve the M. O. U. for the American Rescue Plan Act-funded road projects.
Is this a new one for, for twenty-five, or is this the existing one that we?
This is the existing one that we have, we just have never signed, we hadn't signed this one, so for the, for the allocation for those funds for the road project.
Arpa?
Yeah, for Arpa.
Okay, and that's what Mr. McNally was referring to earlier. So in a deadline to use these funds are in twenty-six, December twenty twenty-six, I think.
Well, so, but, and we have to make a commitment to it before February of twenty-five, so they have to be spent by the, by twenty-six.
But make a, we had to make a commitment by December twenty twenty-four? December twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, so we can get started.
February, yeah. Okay. I understand.
I move we authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with the American Rescue Plan Fund Act with this project.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Letter B, discussion and possible action to approve the minor plat for cube development and supply.
Ah, I've reviewed all of it. I mean, if you want to speak on it, I mean, it looks good to me, but.
I was trying to, I really couldn't see it on my computer. What part of auto?
What part of auto? It's the service road. Between three fifty-nine and fourteen eighty-nine down here, it's gonna be on the service road. And auto goes right into the, right next to that street, right?
That's where it dead ends to the service road, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it goes all the way back to First.
Let me see, let me bring it up.
It goes past where the old Catholic church was over here and all the way back to First.
Okay.
The letters in, the letters in there.
It's, there's, there's a letter from L. J. A. recommending that we approve it.
You good with it, Ms. Green? Are you just still doing some research on it?
Are you good?
So it, we're planning on expanding that road, and can someone elaborate a little bit more in detail about the plat?
Yeah, it's for the, it's for the cut through.
It's just extending the.
Yeah, it's just extending it.
Just extending it?
That's my, that's what I, that's what I was gonna say.
It's just extending it through that site. Like, we're not gonna continue up auto at the moment.
Trying to find it, it's right here. I know it, it's right here in the document.
Yeah, they would just extend it to, because right now it's basically just an asphalt road at the moment. They would widen it a little bit and extend it through that tract.
Yeah, I'm not even sure there's a, is it even asphalt there?
It just kinda ends right there.
Yeah, it just kinda ends right there, and there's like, there's, there's like, there's like a cutout for it, but there's like nothing there, it just.
I think there's like patches, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of it, yeah.
Yeah.
So they would just extend it through.
So they just want to make auto reach their project site, is what they're asking for, that's my understanding, yeah.
And this is for the company Inno Metal Studs?
I'm sorry?
Inno Metal Studs?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So, are y'all familiar with Inno Metal Studs? You used to.
I just heard the name from the application.
They, they manufacture metal studs like for buildings, metal studs, they actually make them, but they were right there off of three fifty-nine going to our full strip just as you pass up Ferguson, and they were in that building there. And I was actually curious, because I went by and I didn't see that sign, and I didn't know they were actually moving into the city limits.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tax revenue. Good with it? Ms. Green? You good?
Yeah, I'm good with it, yeah.
So I make a motion that we approve the plat for, what is this? The minor plat for cube development and supply.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, letter C, discussion and possible action to consider supporting the Brookshire Blessing Toy Drive.
Yes, I'd heard, talked to some people around town, they was asking about this program. I didn't know much about it, and they were kind of giving me a little bit of details about it, and said it was a good thing for the, for the citizens and the kids, and I think Mr. Bird is here today, and I would like for him to come up and let us know a little bit more details about this program.
I didn't get one.
Did you get one?
He has, he's had a couple of weeks ago.
Make sure you get one.
No, but I usually keep it in my folder, and somebody got it.
Ms. Taylor.
Well, the Brookshire Blessings been here for fifteen years, it's made sixteen years. It's been the Brookshire One Hundred Club for fourteen years, and I merged with the police department. I'm the one brought the toy drive here in Brookshire. The City of Brookshire always supported me. When Chief Jackson left, they stopped supporting me, and now I'm here to ask for y'all's support and some fundings for the toy drive. When Mr. Heinz came, he didn't wanna support, he only wanted twelve families. I serve, I serve over fifteen hundred kids every year, and I wanna continue doing that. And I just can't see myself only doing twelve families. I just like y'all's support, and we have, we did it at Hovis Park last year, and I have a lot of more vendors coming out this year, and I need to find, I need Public Works to make sure we have enough power there to support the, all the bouncers and all that stuff there. If the power go out, I just need someone there to come in and hit the breakers and make sure we have that. I just like to help the support of Brookshire. I've done so much for the police department, I've done so much for the City of Brookshire, and I want it back. I want y'all's support. Y'all can help me.
So is this for City of Brookshire only, or do you, do surrounding areas?
Patterson, Patterson and City, the, the Fire Department in Patterson, they'll be merging with me this year, because I've asked the Fire Department here to help last year, they said they will, but they never showed up. So the Patterson Fire Department will be here supporting us this year.
What time, is, she said Hovis Park?
At Hovis Park.
So you're just asking for Public Works, for, for the city to, to provide?
They used to provide these trash cans, the boxes.
So you're asking for that support?
And then they, they used to be there for, they were there with, for the whole toy drive, and when we used to drive around, and they stopped that, they didn't want that, but it's not what they want, it's what the fact, the citizens of Brookshire want, and I wanna continue doing that as well. But right now, we doing, at Hovis Park and following years, I wanna be able to drive back around and get everybody that, that we used to work with, you know?
But for this year, what you're asking is for support from Public Works to provide resources?
I want funding, because we've had, I've had plenty of big companies that were supporting us, and I don't like to call names, but I will. When Jeremiah Hill and, and Ms. Ward was here, they stopped a couple of big companies for helping me, and so I need, I'm, I want the city to, to kind of help fill in those, those gaps.
What kind of funding are you speaking of?
Just a thousand dollars to pay for some, some vendors that I, I'm having come in, you know? I'm not asking for much, and I just like to help.
Will you be able to provide?
Whatever you need, I can provide it. Yes, sure. I am a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, so I have all my certificates and everything.
So maybe, I don't know if this is even possibility, but we're gonna be under budget for the Christmas festival, probably by around a thousand bucks. Is it possible we could just take that money from the Christmas festival celebration line item somehow and?
We can put it in community outlets.
And do it as some sort of?
It's good, I mean, it's gonna help the community, it's gonna help the kids, it's gonna help the families, you know?
It's Christmas, it falls right on that budget line item, so.
As long as you provide us with how you're spending the money itemized.
I will.
I, I do, I would love to see the parade start again, and if you never participated with it, it was, it was extremely satisfying to see those children run out in their pajamas and receive a, a toy. It was, we, we had widespread support with that, it was motorcycle clubs that used to come down every year, the police department, the fire department, and it was a, a big thing, and we tried to make sure we hit every neighborhood in, in the city.
And they did.
But we asked the chief last year to support us, he said he will not support us, and we had to hire outside officers to come to the park, and the City of Brookshire Police Department is this part of the city, and I feel like they should support us as well, you know? If not, send officers out there to drive through the park just to see what we doing and make sure nothing's wrong.
But that's not on, but that's not, you're not gonna do that this year?
No, no, I'm not doing the, the ride, but it will be coming back.
Okay.
It will come back, and if I gotta hire outside police officers to escort us, I will, because that's what the kids want. The kids ask me every day, are you gonna drive by? And I told them, no, we don't have the support.
How many years did you do that?
It's made sixteen years. I've done it with the police department for fourteen years. I never had one incident, not one child ever got hurt, not, I never had a complaint on me, but when Jennifer Ward came in, I had fifteen complaints in three months, fifteen. And that hurt.
So we, you good with Ms. McNally? You mean everybody?
Yeah.
She said the money from Ms. Christian, okay. So I make a motion that we approve a thousand dollars for Brookshire Blessings Toy Drive.
Can I ask you to amend that to also include that we would provide support from Public Works? And that there would be a funds transfer?
Thank you.
Second.
We'd like your assistance with amendments. So did you get all three of those parts of that then? Okay.
I guess all in favor is will, right?
Aye.
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 Aye. That's my thing over there.
Okay, letter D, update on Christmas festival, that's you, Mr. McNally.
So the Christmas festival is coming together, it's looking very exciting. We are going to have an event that's gonna start on Saturday, it's gonna run from noon to five thirty here at the Convention Center and at the Amphitheater Park. We have music happening through the day, we've got some rides coming in, we've gonna have family craft projects, all kinds of activities happening throughout the day, and that's gonna go from noon until five thirty. And at six o'clock, we're doing a brand new event in Brookshire, which is we're going to do a Christmas lights parade, and so we're going to have all of the floats and the stuff, and the lights are gonna, people will have lights on their cars, on their, if the band is marching, they'll have lights on the people, and they'll march in the parade. It's gonna start at six o'clock, and a little bit change in, in our traditional route. And a little bit change in, in our traditional, uh, route. Um, just because we wanted a, a, a route that would give us less streetlights. Um, we're going to actually come down Fifth Street. So we're still going to start at the fi- at the police department like we normally do. But instead of coming up Ninety, we're going to come up Fifth Street. Um, and then just that little jog, uh, come right up here to, to Cooper. And then, uh, we'll turn and come down to Sixth Street and that'll be the official end of the parade is right there at Sixth and Cooper. Um, people can unload and all that kind of stuff, come back over here to the festival. Because the last float in the parade is going to be the big man himself. And, uh, he's going to come right up here to Cooper, he'll dismount from his ride and we'll come over and light the Christmas tree for us. Um, and so, uh, we'll have some, uh, events here from about, uh, six thirty-ish however it takes to the parade to get down here, um, until around eight, eight thirty. Uh, we have, um, we have, uh, a country music group that's coming, they're going to be doing country Christmas carols. The whole kind of theme for the event is a country Christmas. So they'll be here, we'll have Santa cookies, cocoa, uh, pictures, photos, all that kind of stuff, um, in the, in the evening, um, for, for the families that want to come participate in that. Uh, we have a lot of competition for that date, uh, which is making it a little bit challenging, uh, for us. We've got, um, uh, right now, I think we have two food trucks and about six vendors that are signed up for sure. Um, and we have about, um, a half dozen vehicles that have registered to, to be in the parade. Um, so we, unfortunately, we aren't, we, we can't get, um, we're not getting the band because they're already committed someplace else, uh, from the high school. Uh, we're not getting, uh, so there's a lot of people that are, that are already committed because there are so many other events happening. ROTC isn't even committed to a Christmas thing, that's Pearl Harbor Day. So they're actually committed to a, a big, a big event for Pearl Harbor Day. Um, so, uh, we, we're just really looking for that support. So, uh, we're asking the community, if you are excited and would like to participate, there are lots of ways you can do that. Uh, during the day, we're going to have opportunities for choirs or soloist groups, churches, if they want to come and perform, uh, and sing carols to us, that is an opportunity that's available. We have, uh, a group that's coming out, the Cheer, the, the little girls cheer.
Boys and Girls Club.
Boys and Girls Club Cheer Group, they're going to come and do a performance. Two o'clock, we're going to have an ugly sweater contest with prizes. So find your best ugly sweater and come on down, two o'clock, uh, we'll have everybody up on stage. Uh, we're doing the Christmas tree decorating contest, which we've done for several years, has been a big hit. We have twelve, uh, twelve registered participants, uh, already for that. Um, Goya Foods is coming down, they're going to be doing a big giveaway, uh, throughout the day. Um, so lots of exciting stuff happening, uh, and if you'd like to participate, uh, join the parade, come perform, uh, you know, just come and bring the family down, lots of, lots of chances to, to be involved. Look on the website, there's a, I don't know, three or four different flyers on the website, ways to participate. Questions?
Where's your, where's your parade going to start at?
It'll start like the PD, like it always does.
PD.
Yeah, and then we'll come up Fifth Street then, instead of up Ninety.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have, have you thought about the parking? For the, the citizens to watch it coming down Fifth Street?
Yeah, actually, uh, Officer Olive and I went over and we looked at it and, uh, he felt that as long as, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll close the road so the parade, you actually will be able to run down, right down the middle of the street, which leaves plenty of room on both sides for, uh, for viewing. Uh, the only thing that was, that was even considered a, a potential issue is that there is only one egress to the apartment complex there off of Fifth Street, right behind Rocket Ship Park. Um, but, uh, you know, we're going to flyer them and let them know that, uh, that they will not have access from like six oh five until six twenty on that day. And just let them know that we'll have the parade there, so.
Um, I know, I think it was Sealy or either San Felipe, um, they had this competition with their concrete trucks. Someone can reach out to them, because they decorate their country, concrete, concrete trucks every year.
Yeah, they were here one year, we had a night parade before and the country truck was here.
Yeah, so you?
Yeah, if you, I said, I'm asking anybody if you, if you have contacts for that kind of stuff, we'd love to have them come participate, so. Yeah, yeah, please, uh, same with all of y'all, if you have contacts, please feel free to, to spread the word, uh.
And I have one request.
Sure.
No, the, uh, um...
You want to judge the ugly sweater contest?
Middle branch, single song. Jingle Bell Rock.
Put a Santa Claus suit on. Sounds good, though.
And a big thank you to, uh, Quotacious Dunn, who has stepped up and has been really assisting me and putting all of this together. Um, she and I have been kind of man in the helm of this and she has been a huge help. Uh, and I love to see it when our citizens want to get involved and, and step up and, and be a part of it, so.
That's good.
All right.
That's a good update.
So I did see something else that's happening on the twentieth, what was that?
The twentieth is, uh, the police department is having, they're driving.
Oh, okay, okay.
Santa in the neighborhood thing. Yeah, hmm. Yeah, I saw something come out, it was, uh, it was, uh...
That's not the council, that's not, that's not the flyer from...
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was, I was questioning it, I know it was stuck in my head, the twentieth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, one more thing, I'm looking for a cool ride for Santa, for the end of the parade. I, like, I, I'd love to get like a horse drawn wagon or somebody has a really cool car or an old pickup truck or something. I'm just looking for a cool ride for Santa. So if anybody has anything or knows anything, talk to me, I'd love to find out. Who? Oh, yeah, Nolan, yeah, Nolan's, uh, he's working the Sealy, the Sealy event that day, because he can't DJ for us either, so. He's, he's done that Sealy event for like ten years or something, so, yeah.
Prepare the steps, discuss and update it and we'll move right along to eight.
Talk, 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 catch up with him after, right after the meeting, we'll, we'll chat, be great.
Okay. Number eight, executive session. Council will meet in executive session pursuant to the section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code to consult with city attorney.
She acting like, um, uh, she been, she been... They used to kiss in the bathroom for, for, for sure, yeah, yeah. Oh, she, you know, she walked up to me, tell me, tell me, I heard you been talking about me, I said, what you talking about?
Okay. So, we have the agenda. We have the list of possible actions resulting from executive action, which is no action. And number 10, future agenda items. Start with you this time.
I don't have any.
What?
I'm sure Mr. Richards has a list for you.
Oh, yeah.
Aileen gave me hers, okay? In green and... So, I have 11.
Pick the best three.
No, that's not a rule, sir. I'm sorry. The first one is gonna be discussion, and it's about TikTok.
Discussion about TikTok?
Yeah. New law.
What is that? You wanna talk about it?
No, we can't talk about it.
Yes, there's a policy that you can adopt that prohibits certain social media or people from using city devices to participate in certain social media.
My understanding that was passed as state law.
It's a new law.
I don't use that stuff anyway.
My understanding is that was passed as state law.
Yes, it was.
My understanding is that was passed as a state law.
There are specific points that we have to write now as a local government to adopt a similar policy. And the governor has drawn out a sample policy to other cities.
Okay.
But we will put that on a future agenda.
Oh, yes, it's something that needs to be... Needs to be...
Just gonna read your whole list.
It should take five seconds on the agenda. It's gonna be short on the agenda. It's gonna be accept the state law, and we're gonna... I mean, who's gonna fight that?
You wanna do it now?
I wish we could.
We can't do it now.
Let's accept the state law and move on.
That's right.
But, okay. Yeah, it's short. I mean, the discussion is gonna be, do we follow state law or not? Okay, yeah.
But at least it'll be official, right?
Yes, exactly.
Social media person.
What's the discussion?
Discussion about social media person.
What her...
No, we have one.
We have one.
And what is it? What are your requests?
I don't know who it is. It didn't get discussed in the budget deposition. I don't know. I've never seen him.
She's here a lot. She was here today.
I've never seen her.
They're a contract vendor, right?
She was at Trunk or... Trunk or treat, and she was at National...
Get a report.
I probably know who she was.
Yeah, you saw... She was...
A future agenda presentation from a social media person.
Presentation from a social media person. Okay. Also like to make a discussion of possible action for a donation for Royal High School Band. They've supported their city in a lot of events, and they're trying to collect money for travel to San Antonio, I think. And I don't know if that's against the rules or not. I mean...
We'll take a look at it.
Right. That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. Great. Okay, go ahead, sir. Also would like to discussion of possible action to hire a consultant to review the master therapy plan. And, uh... Does an engineer that worked for Tech Doc for 20-some years retire? Now has his own firm, and he was part of the plan in the county, so he has good information.
Discussion possible action.
Okay. Add Horvath Park repairs back to the... Back to the agenda.
This is a public works report?
Yes. Also would like to add on the agenda, discussion of possible action for EDC mixer. And this is an EDC project that needs to be approved through council.
Can I have some?
Discussion of possible action for lawn contract, EDC project. Lawn cut, lawn maintenance project. This is an EDC project that needs to be approved by council. Discussion impossible action to replace the amphitheater sign. This is an EDC project. Discussion of possible action to reinstall the Armstrong... Edward E. Armstrong sign back at the amphitheater. This is also an EDC project.
You said reasons...
I'm sorry, at the Dunagan House Museum, yes. EDC project. Two more, mayor. Uh... Discussion impossible action to... For approval, second approval for bank, right? For New First Bank, second approval signature.
You ready?
Agenda item number nine, discussion and possible action resulting from executive section which is no action. And number ten, future agenda items. Start with you this time.
I don't have any.
What?
I'm sure Mr. Richards have a list.
Oh, yeah.
Eileen gave me hers, okay? And green and so I have, I have eleven.
Ooh.
Pick the best three.
No, that's not a rule, sir. I'm sorry. The first one is, is gonna be discussion and it's about TikTok.
Discussion about TikTok?
Yeah. New law.
You wanna talk about it?
No, we can't talk about it.
My understanding that was passed as state law.
It's a new law.
I don't, I don't use that stuff anyway.
My understanding is that was passed as state law.
Yes, it was.
My understanding is that was a pa- that was passed as a state law.
Okay.
Oh, yes, it's something that needs to be, needs to be, uh...
Just gonna read your whole list.
It should take five seconds on the, it's gonna be short on the agenda. It's gonna be accept the state law and we're gonna, I mean, who's gonna fight?
You wanna do it now?
I wish we could.
We can't do it now.
Five seconds, say, let's accept the state law and move on. But, okay. Yeah, it's short. I mean, the, the, the discussion is gonna be, do we follow state law or not? Okay.
But at least it'll be official, right?
Yes, exactly.
Social media person.
What's, what's the discussion?
Discussion about social media person. No, we, we have one.
We have one.
I, I don't know who it is. It, it was, oh, it didn't get discussed in the budget, that position. I don't know. I've never seen him.
She's here a lot. She was here today.
I've never seen her.
Don't know.
They're a contract, they're a contract vendor, right?
The event, she was at, she was at Trunk or, uh, Trunk or Treat and she was at, um, National.
Get a report.
Oh, I probably know who she was.
She was, yeah, you saw, she was.
The future agenda presentation from the social media person.
Presentation from social media person. Okay. Also like to make a, uh, discussion and possible action for a donation for Raw High School Band. They, they come, they've supported their city in a lot of events and they're trying to, uh, uh, collect money for travel to San Antonio, I think. And I don't know if that's against the rules or not. I mean... Right. That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Also would like to discussion and possible action to hire a consultant to review the master therapy plan. And, uh, there's an engineer that worked for TechDoc for twenty, twenty-some years, retired, now has his own firm and he was, uh, part of the plan in the county, so he has good information.
Discussion possible action.
Okay. Add Horvath Park repairs back to the, back to the agenda.
This is public works report?
Yes. Just wait. Also would like to add on the agenda, uh, discussion and possible action for, uh, EDC mixer. And this is an EDC project that needs to be approved through council. Discussion and possible action for a lawn contract, EDC project. Lawn, cut lawn maintenance project. This was EDC project, needs to be approved by council. Discussion and possible action to replace the amphitheater sign. This is an EDC project. Discussion and possible action to, uh, reinstall the, uh, Armstrong, Edward E. Armstrong sign back at the, uh, amphitheater. This is also an EDC project. Uh, I'm sorry, at the, uh, the, uh, Donegan House Museum, yes. EDC project.
Two more, Mayor.
Uh, discussion and possible action to, for approval, second approval for bank. Right? For, uh, New First Bank, second approval signature. Is that correct? And the last one is discussion and possible action for the Brookshire Youth Program. And that's all I have.
I just have one, Mr. Mayor, discussion and possible action regarding our agreement with, uh, Grant Works as our grant writer, slash administrator, slash whatever else it is that they do.
Will we phrase that again?
Uh, discussion and possible action regarding our agreement with Grant Works for Grant Works.
Okay. Anything else, sir? Ms. Taylor?
None at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Green?
Discussion and possible action, animal control officer position.
Cats too, cats too. Cats, Lord, it's... It's a lot, I see.
Anything else, Mr. Green?
You gonna make the motion for me to go later?
Shay.
Oh, sure.
Next item is number eleven, adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Check it.
Okay. All in favor?